Madam President, are you ready for roll call? Trish Bodie.
Here.
Gloria Gonzalez Delacchia.
Here.
Alexis Grimes.
Here.
Shadé Fashakum.
Here.
Erin Johnson.
Here.
Christine Mauer.
Here.
Anna Smith.
Here. It is 6:15 PM and I call our special team of eight training meeting of the Leander ISD Board of Trustees to order. We will now move on to the citizen comment portion of our agenda. I'll give an abbreviated update this evening. We have two individuals who will be speaking or have signed up to speak. All speakers will have one minute and a half per our updated board operating procedures. Speakers, when you come up to speak, please remember it's not a back and forth. Direct your comments to the board member, but since it isn't a back and forth, we request that you respect the limitation of not naming members by name if we couldn't respond to you. We'll just say that the board operating procedures encourage polite professional conduct, and you can read more there. I think at least one of our speakers has heard this before, so they know the drill. So without further ado, we'll go ahead and have our first speaker for the evening, Speaker One.
My name is Mike Sanders, and I'd like to speak a little bit tonight about the fact that student outcomes start at the boardroom, right? It's nice to see tonight another member of our board without a face mask, even two more members of our board without face masks, and dropping the pretense that the person next to you is going to somehow cause you to get sick. It's simply a pretense. It's simply a facade, and if you don't even trust the person sitting next to you, you got a major, major problem. So trust is established by our trustees, right? And trust is destroyed by our trustees, right? Our trustees either trust each other, or you don't trust each other, right? You either rely on each other's judgment, or you don't rely on each other's judgment. You either trust the community, or you don't trust the community. So if we have a condition where our board members don't trust each other, then the natural question is, why? Why don't you trust each other? And I think that it's pretty clear to many in our community why you all don't trust each other. When a man betrays his wife, he can ask for forgiveness, and his wife can offer him forgiveness, but she's not going to trust him, not the same as she did before he went and betrayed her, right? When a board member betrays the voters, the voters aren't going to...I'm supposed to get three minutes.
Sorry, for tonight, for our meeting, it's one and a half, but we can go ahead. They can...the timer, I think they're having an issue. Where are they at on that?
I'm sorry, I didn't even see that it started out at one and a half.
Well, they had an issue with it, so we're going to get a correction. Okay, they're going to go ahead and sit up.
Okay, well, I appreciate that. So when the board members went into a secret backroom deal and selected the seventh member of this council of this board, everybody knows that the backroom deal happened. You can pretend all you want in front of public that it didn't happen, but when it came time to vote, not one person asked one question when the motion was made. Not one person asked a single question, because the deal had already been done. Only one person out of the six voted against it, right? The deal was already made, and it's plain and clearly visible to anybody looking from the outside that the deal was done in a backroom. And you can lie about it all you want, but all your lying does is just cause us to further distrust you. And the reason you distrust each other is because you know that each other is lying. You know that each other is telling the falsehood about how you selected this person and how you're doing business. And if you know that the person sitting next to you is a liar, you aren't going to trust that person.
All right, thank you. Is our second speaker here for this? He is not here. All right, board members, we will go on. We need to get our podium mic off, because there will be extra noise in back. Thank you, Gerald. Okay. We have, as you all noticed, a shortened agenda item for this evening. There's no deliberation or voting tonight. There's deliberation, there's no voting tonight. Tonight is going to be about our Team of Eight workshop team building, and we have two items coming up. Is this the point where y'all wanted me to talk about why? Okay. So, as you remember, we did our survey on what type of training we wanted for our Team of Eight training. One of the things that we talked about was board role, superintendent, district role, how do we work together to make our district as awesome as we want it to be? And as we started having the conversations, one thing that kept coming up to mind is Anna and I, over the summer, had taken that quality learning with David Langford and found it really helpful to kind of be given some tools where you can operationalize or kind of take discussions to the next level, and really see, instead of talking around it, to kind of help advance us, get us...instead of re-saying something, going to another meeting, saying it over again, this was about kind of moving the ball forward. And it was also about realizing the system that you're in, kind of a systems thinking. And so it just kept coming back to David. So David Langford graciously offered to help us with our Team of Eight training, and so I think I summed up all the main pieces. You can correct me if I miss something.
Yeah, great, Madam President, thank you. Yeah, we're very excited to have David Langford here helping us tonight. We also have Sarah Grissom, Dr. Sarah Grissom, and Dr. Sarah Martinez in the back. They're going to be working with us as well. And Dr. Otterbury, of course, is helping us take notes and make sure that we take any take forwards as we go out of here. So without further ado, we're going to do a small team building exercise first before we ask David to step forward. And so everybody has taken the StrengthsFinder...what do you call it? Tool? Assessment, thank you, Erin. And so we're going to go and gather around that table and turn that mic on, if you don't mind. We're just going to do a brief exercise with StrengthsFinder before we let David kick off.
You don't need it. But that's mine, too.
You're in my spot.
All right. Okay, the camera there is one that's going to turn, so...
Oh, don't stand there. Oh! He said, "Don't stand there." All right. It's like, "Come back."
Okay, there's no secrets here. Oh, do me a favor, if you would, will you go get your...
Go get that.
You said you didn't need that.
I'm sorry, I'm just making sure you get your steps in.
Just the definitions, not by...
Just the definitions, you're good. All right, okay, so we're going to go pretty fast. I don't want to spend too long on this, so we're going to try to get done here in about 20 minutes, but I do want to just explore a little bit our own strengths, so getting to know our own strengths a little better, but then also understanding the strengths of the team, and understanding what they look like altogether. And so we're going to do that. Everybody has an achiever, except one of you does not have that on your list. So Shadé, would you like to guess which one of us does not have achiever on our list?
I can't guess. It's not me.
Don't cheat.
Looking up the teacher's notes, looking at...
She's definitely an achiever over here.
I don't know if I call that a team.
She also has competitive.
Oh, that's a good point. Good point. Good point.
Hmm. Hmm. Well, I just saw the answer.
Anybody? Anybody?
Well, what is achiever is...oh, you want to be busy and productive.
That is definitely me.
Move that ball, come on, let's go.
So it's interesting, Christine is the only one who doesn't have achiever in the top five. Now, here's what's interesting, is that of course StrengthsFinder doesn't only measure your top five, it actually measures 34, right? And so I bet if you go down in...
I guess like number seven.
Exactly, then you start to find those things. So this doesn't always necessarily measure exactly. So you better give me your achiever card, because I'm the other one.
Take it.
That has that. Okay, so let's pass out these. And I'm starting with the ones that a lot of us have, right? So...so almost everybody has learner, except for who?
This girl does not have learner. I gave it to her. I don't have one, she doesn't have it.
I know, so you have it?
Yes.
Everybody else has it?
Uh-huh.
Okay, and I have it, so somebody is lying.
Oh, I don't remember.
I don't remember either.
Okay, you're fine.
I'm like, "You need to tell me."
We'll go through. So Alexis doesn't, and Erin actually has it, and Christine, again, does not have it.
No.
Okay. I want us to just look on the list here quickly, and as we go through these, if you'll just read quickly what the definition here is, because sometimes what this says and what you think in your head is a little different from how they talk about it, right? So as we go through, we're going to just do that. All right, now we start to get into a little...
Oh, now there's only...
Strategic. Who has it? Do you have it?
It's me.
Who else thinks they have this one?
Me.
Okay. So here's the list.
Who has it?
Who has strategic?
I'm this. I know I'm this for sure.
I definitely have it, so...
Ooh, so do I.
And Erin, and...
Erin definitely has it, and Anna has it.
So I don't have it?
Alexis does not have it.
Okay, that's it. Take it back.
And just notice that these are color-coded too, right? So the purple ones are the executing ones. These are the strategic thinking ones in red. So we'll go through those. Okay, the purple ones, again, are executing, so...
I don't think I have that.
I know I did, because I was restorative. I was like, "That's what's..."
Interesting.
Gloria's restorative.
Okay.
Anna's restorative.
There's Anna's garden. Okay, we have two of these.
Positivity.
That's Trish.
I don't know if it came up on my thing.
No, it didn't.
See, y'all may be more positive, that's all. I've grown with y'all.
Christine Togas.
Yeah, Christine and G.
Blue is influencing, I think.
Blue is relationship building. So this one is relator.
That's me.
That's you, sorry.
Pretty sure that's me.
Shadé and Erin is correct. Okay, here's some more blue.
Harmony.
Harmony.
Not it. Not me.
Alexis is harmony.
The way you said that.
Alexis, you're harmony.
I was going to say...
You think it lied?
I think it lied.
Did you lie on it?
Be sure to tell lie when you go home.
I'm going to point that out, because, you know, like, it's a good thing I have East Country in my house.
So we've got to go here.
There's no way it's me.
That was before I had the job that I was...
You don't enjoy...
Oh, that is...
There is agreement.
Yeah, you're harmony. You're harmony.
See?
Avoider of all conflict, yes. There you go.
The orange is the influencer one.
The maximizer.
We don't have a whole lot of these on our list.
Alexis is a maximizer, and Shadé...
Maximizer.
Maximizer harmony.
Go, team.
That's right.
All right, unfortunately, there's only one person who has responsibility in this whole group, which is not good for us.
Shadé.
Oh, Shadé, thank you. We needed somebody to bring it to the team, thanks.
But make sure that you read what it says about that here, because...
Psychological ownership. Yep.
Do what you say you will do.
Okay, we only have one blue.
That's me.
That is totally a...
Awesome.
It's totally Christine, thank you.
Most envied.
It is the most envied, because those are the people who light up the room, right?
I'm a people person.
Yep. Okay, we have one of these.
That's you.
That is me.
That's total first.
And look here, look at all this red.
Yeah, he's red, yeah.
Reven includer.
That's me.
An individualization.
Oh, that's me.
Oh.
Read what that one says, because that one's a little different.
Oh, I do like that.
That sounds like Trish. Ah, that is you, Trish.
Okay, we have an input.
That's you. G. That's G.
We have an analytical...
Maybe to know more.
Oh, that's Erin.
That's me. Nope, that's me. Analytical's me.
Christine's analytical.
It definitely must be close down there. Arranger.
That's me.
I got all purple.
Put your last one.
It's my last one, here.
Have a look at that one.
They like to figure out of all pieces.
Hmm. Believe.
You'd be like, "Oh, that's Alexis."
I was like, "That's Alexis."
Yep.
Values.
Like, I'm the purple in hand. What's that one?
What color? Are they all like mine?
People strong, they take control of the situation.
Connectedness.
Connectedness.
Trish?
Oh, me.
That's me.
Yep. That's me. I like it.
Oh, yeah.
Discipline.
Not it.
Not it.
Oh, why not? Now I got to read that. Please enjoy routine instruction.
That's Bruce.
Futuristic.
Oh, my gosh. It's so red. Oh, my gosh. I'm purple.
And then purple.
Purple. We are...
I'm all over the place. Erin's got a rainbow over there.
This is not...this is relationship influencer piece, which is strong.
What is the purple one again?
I'm just all over the place.
Executing. I'm a doer. That would be true.
So this purple is executing.
The colors, yeah. Very interesting.
So some of the questions that the book asks then about strengths-based leadership specifically are, you know, what are our top themes as a team, and what are the patterns of behavior that result out of us having this makeup? And so that's something for us to think about as we go forward. One of the powerful things I've seen, even as you put together board committees, is how you tend to gravitate towards your strengths when you're choosing your committees, right? And so that's...
The Leander Independent School District is one of them.
How do we communicate, and what drives us? It's always interesting to think about what other people's strengths are and why they react the way they do, because that influences why they react the way they do. I think it's important that we think about these things as we ask ourselves, how do we build and maintain relationships amongst the Team of Eight? And since this is a team building activity, I thought that was an important question for us to consider.
It's pretty cool.
And then how do we recognize each other and celebrate the successes that we individually achieve, but then that we achieve as a Team of Eight as well?
Can we get that sent to us?
I can get this sent to you.
It's in the Google Drive. Yeah, I saw it end up with the materials.
And it's interesting, too, that this is so, like, so understanding that these three blue ones are the relationship building, but then there's the analytical piece for me, like, so when we did the color thing at school, I was orange-green, like, real close together. So it totally makes sense. That's a people outwardly thing and an analytical thing, so it totally, yeah, it's pretty neat.
Yeah. Okay, and then Michi was kind enough to make cards for all of you.
Nice. I am an A word around my neck.
While we're talking.
Look, I'm this, this is me.
Talk to me like this.
Yeah.
Yay! I like my colors. Thank you. I am an achiever.
It's so red, it's not even funny.
You are so red.
Okay, anything else you want to add?
I mean, I guess you'd find balance by finding other people to fill in those gaps for you, but...
This bothered me a lot until I took the 34.
Yes.
And then when I looked in the top 20, then that's where all the balance comes with relationship and influencing, is all inside there. And so that made me feel a little better. So sometimes you must be careful not to rely too heavily on this.
On the top five, yeah.
The other interesting thing is I've only ever taken this once, so I took this, I don't know, five or six years ago probably, and a lot of people who take it again say that it does shift over time.
I had to take it for work, too. It was really interesting.
I was just going to say two things. First is it comes out of a strengths mindset as opposed to a deficit sort of mindset, right? Often we look at what are our weaknesses, and we try to fill the gaps, and the whole concept here is apply the strengths, right? Be exceptional at the things that you are naturally strong at, right? And then it's a question of using combinations of strengths in teams in those settings to balance those things. The other thing I would say is, of the 34, the ones in the middle, they don't, I mean, they can shuffle around pretty easily, but the ones at the tails, the ones at the top and the ones at the bottom, I think have particular interest, because it's unlikely that one at the bottom is going to end up in the top.
Right.
And the ones at the top may shuffle up and down just a little bit, but they're going to stay at the top.
Yeah.
Even if they don't make the top five, they're going to be in the top seven or eight, right? And the other, the last thing I'll say is, I think if you, if you take this at different times in your life, it will shift, but it will also shift as you think about yourself in different roles, in different areas of your life. So at home, or at work, or in board service, or whatever, you may see different aspects of your strengths rise and others settle just a little.
Yeah, that context is super important.
That's what I thought, even when we took it the first time, it was like, okay, I'm answering this in a board lens, because in a mom, in sister and daughter lens, I think I have a slightly different role, you know, strength, yeah, ways, or maybe the order of them would have been shifted, you know, based on that environment.
Well, and I think it helps, too, as we're debating or deliberating or discussing an issue, to know, too, somebody might be using a different lens or pointing something out, that doesn't mean that they're completely missing your point, they're just talking about it from a different angle, to try to balance, right? So, yeah, no, this is helpful.
So when I took it, something I was surprised about was empathy, and looking, none of us have that in our top five. It doesn't mean that we don't have it. We don't have it in our top five. Mine for empathy, I was shocked, where it was actually towards the end. And I'm like, I'm the person who would see something wrong and then just cry for the person, but right away, I would be like, what are we going to do about it? So I just switched, so I think that's why, if you have like some execution aspect of things that are strong, then the empathy might seem low, because...
Because you're a...
It's only for a moment, and you just want to fix it.
Yeah.
Let's go troubleshoot and fix it.
Yeah. This is cool. Yeah.
Thank you for indulging me.
Yeah, that's me. Thank you.
All right. Okay, so, to continue our team building, I'm going to just turn it over to you and let you just lead us for the rest of the evening. You are the last main agenda item, which is continuous improvement foundations, history, and tools. Thank you so much for being here tonight, David, we appreciate you.
Okay. Well, the first thing I want to say is thank you. I know it's a hard job to be a board member, and you probably don't get thanked much, to get yelled at a lot, and people calling you late at night and all kinds of things, but it takes a lot of gumption to put your hand up and say, "If not, if not me, then who?" And so I really appreciate that. So I thought tonight that what I would do would just start taking you on a journey. And some of you may not even know who I am or my association with Leander, but I've been working with Leander since 1992. And my journey in improving schools and education and learning started even long before that. So basically, in 1979, my wife and I were both teachers in Montana, and we were starving to death. And a teacher came into the workroom one day and said, "Hey, who'd like to go to Alaska? Because my father just got hired assistant superintendent, and he's one of the higher teachers." And we'd heard about these fabulous stories about the pay in Alaska and everything, said, "Okay, let's go." So my wife and I went on an awesome adventure, starting in 1981, to Alaska. And the reason why I want to go back and kind of tell you that story, because it fits in with Leander and where we are today in terms of continuous improvement. So in Alaska, money was no object at that time. 1979, all the money from Prudential Bay started flowing into the state coffers, billions and billions. And when we got there, the question wasn't, you know, what's your budget, it was how much can you spend, literally? And I was an itinerant music teacher at the time. I had 16 schools spread over 460 linear miles, and only about 400 students spread between those 16 different schools. And my job was to get on an airplane every day and fly to a different school. My travel budget alone was $600,000 a year, and that was in 1981. So that kind of gives you a little picture about what was happening in Alaska, because we thought money could solve all problems, right? In schools especially, people complain all the time, "There's not enough money, we don't have enough money, we don't have enough time, can't do this, can't do that." Well, what if you suddenly had all the money and time that you could possibly think about? What would you do with it? And, well, what happened in Alaska was just massive waste, billions of dollars in waste. So by 1984, the state legislature was pretty fed up and said, "Look, you know, we went to the educators and said, 'What do we do?'" And you said, "Well, pay us more," so we tripled your salaries, and you became the highest paid people in the country. That didn't help. You said, "We need better buildings." So they built billions and billions of dollars with the buildings. Today, I think there's 117, last figure I heard, 117 schools in Alaska built an average cost of $15 million each that have fewer than seven students each in them. So if money could solve the problem, it would have done it. Technology, state Alaska was one-to-one technology in 1986, I think. In fact, the school I was working with... In fact, the school I was working in was more like three-to-one technology versus students. So this was actually kinda unnerving because people were actually there for the wrong reasons. They actually came for the money and the adventure and not so much for kids and what was happening in the state. So by nineteen eighty-four, the state said, we need a new model. So they brought a lot of us together and said, figure out something new. You do anything you want. Money, time, money is not, not an object. And so what do we do? So we came together and we worked on this for a long time and we said that, you know, teachers are not the problem, boards are not the problem, the administration's not the problem, it's, you know, it's really the parents that's the problem, right? So, and so our brilliant idea was to have a school without parents. So imagine that. And that's what we did, actually. We created Mount Edgemont High School in Sitka, Alaska. It was the first public boarding school in the United States. And we opened in the fall of nineteen eighty-five. So any child could come from across the state of Alaska, but primarily it was for minority students in Alaska, and most of them were Alaska native students. We had about twenty-two different ethnic groups represented from the state. So here you get a chance to create something, no barriers. We got the very best teachers in the world. In fact, we had a thousand applications for fourteen different jobs at this high school. Best of the best around the world. We're gonna teach Japanese, Chinese, we're gonna do all these great things. And you'd think that if you got the best of the best of everything and put it in one place, that suddenly system of education would work. One thing that we didn't understand was the, the theory that education operates off of. And we got, came together, and I'll never forget, the first year the superintendent, somebody said, well, what do we do with these kids if they don't work hard here? Because now they're in this boarding school situation, away from their parents, we have total control over them twenty-four hours a day. What if they don't work hard here? And he stood up real straight and looked at us and he said, well, we're gonna send them home. They don't get to be here. And we actually applauded him, you know, finally a superintendent that, you know, could, you know, send kids home that are bad. But the philosophy was get rid of the bad ones, basically. And it's deep within the education system everywhere. That's what we do. That's why we grade people, that's why we rank people, that's why we look at things, you know, to figure out, well, who are the bad ones and, and figure out discipline problems and things like that. The only problem was after the first year, we had sent home forty-two percent of the population. And it became a real joke around school, this would be a great place to work and we get rid of all these kids. And, because, you know, just think of all the teacher meetings we could have and, you know, staff builders like this, things like that. And it was in the end of that year that the superintendent came to us and said, look, we are in a line item in the governor's budget. If we don't do something different, we, significantly different, we won't be here. And he said, look, go out over the summer, do anything. Go to a, go to a conference, go to a class, I'll pay for anything you wanna go to, any training, anything, but we have to have some kind of a different model. And basically, we were trying to do school better than anybody else, you know? We're gonna have bells and tardies and this, and follow this up and discipline reports and you name it. And we had the technology and everything to do it and, and we're gonna, you know, we're gonna do it better than anybody else. And we did. That's what, and that's what happens when you do school the way a school is designed to do. Well, I had just finished my master's degree in administration the year before we opened that school. I'd done this little book report on this man by the name of Dr. W. Edwards Deming. And so I thought, well, I'll call up Deming and, and see if he'll help us, and didn't realize that he was the leading worldwide guru in, in management. And he said, well, I'm not gonna meet you with, with you, but you can come to any of my conferences. So I started going to several of his conferences that summer and started learning about the Deming philosophy. And basically, bringing that back to the school, and, and Deming said, change has to start from the top. And I thought quickly, well, top, superintendent, my principal, you know, I've gotta get them to change. So I started putting articles in their boxes and giving them videos to watch and every chance, just telling them what a bad job, job they were doing. And they didn't get real excited about this new philosophy that I was bringing to them. And so I just went back to my classroom one day and I looked at the students, thirty students I had in the classroom, and I thought, you know, I must be the top of something around here. And maybe this is what Deming was talking about. And if I can't figure out a different way to operate within this class, then what business do I have complaining about the administration, or the board, or anybody else in, in the system? And that's really what, where my personal transformation started to happen. So some of the things I'm gonna share with you guys tonight and tomorrow are, are things that I learned from that experience moving forward. Well, it worked so well within my classrooms that within six months, the superintendent came to me and said, can you do this with the whole school? Because I've never seen kids change like this. And it was because we made radical changes in, in the, in the theory that we were operating from. It's really interesting to me, I've now traveled all over the world, worked with school districts all over the world, and they often have, you know, nice little sayings on the wall like, all students can learn. Yet they, they manage a system where that's not possible. And, and it creates this dichotomy within the organization, and pretty soon you have dropouts and people wanting to be there and they don't wanna be a part of the organization. So instead of a philosophy of sending people home if they can't do this, or they can't work, or punishing them, or rewarding them if they're doing it well, we radically changed the system. They actually started working with students instead of working on them. Instead of making decisions for them, they were, became part of the decision-making process within that. And it was almost like magic that they started to transform. Well, by nineteen ninety, we were getting such international recognition, and we had over two thousand people a year flying all the way to this little school in Alaska to see, you know, what's, what's the magic? What's going on? And there was a film crew that, for PBS, that came and spent a week and actually made a three-hour film called Quality or Else. And so I'd like to play the whole three hours tonight. No. No. But we ended up the last ten minutes of that. And the film was about the work of Dr. W. Edwards Deming and how his work had applied to hospitals, to businesses, to manufacturing, to the Japanese nation, et cetera, et cetera. And we were the only real example about this being applied in education. This film was aired and a lady from Leander, Texas, named Monta Aiken, you might know her, couldn't sleep one night and she turned on PBS about two in the morning and on came this film and our little school was the last ten minutes of it. And that's what got her excited about, this is information we don't have that Leander needs. So I'd like to just show you that last ten minutes because that's what launched the whole continuous improvement meeting or process in Leander.
Sitka, Alaska is home to the only public boarding school in the United States, Mount Edgemont High. Students there study Pacific Rim cultures. In translation, that means essentially, how do you do business in Japan? Not geographically, but in the global market. Sitka is a good deal closer to Tokyo than to New York. With the development of advanced communication and transportation facilities, economic interests have replaced geographic ones. Schoolroom practice now could become economic advantage in the future.
I am from Titulik, Alaska, and I am here today to sell you a product called Bridal Falls Sparkling Water.
Can children drink this drink?
Yes, it's just carbonated water with flavoring.
Aurora was very effective, I thought, in emphasizing the health aspect of the drink. I mean, by the time she was finished, I was ready to buy it.
Japanese customers are buying this Alaska salmon from the high school's entrepreneur class. It is prepared, preserved, and packed to meet their requirements. Just in case the students forget, there's a prominent sign to remind them. This is obviously unusual for a high school, but what is most unusual is that Mount Edgemont, all of it, is following Dr. Deming's continual improvement quality system.
I was, after seven years, I was burnt out in this profession, and that's right on the average. I knew that there were specific things that needed to be done within the system to change it, to improve quality, but I couldn't make it happen.
What we've done in the past is throw money at problems rather than look at the management system of education.
Our whole system is preventing quality from happening. The way we evaluate students, the way teachers and administrators work together, the whole thing is set up to prevent top quality from happening. Everybody wants to do a good job. Students wanna do a good job, teachers wanna do a good job. Nobody comes into the system wanting to do poor work or poor quality.
Mount Edgemont High School is not a special school. It serves students from all over Alaska. Ordinary students are taught by ordinary teachers. No one here was handpicked. They are from small towns and they have all the promises and problems of every other group of American teenagers.
Right. I think that's the best one they ever had.
The difference is Langford. At an industrial meeting in Arizona, he heard about quality programs and knew that was the way to go. He studied everything he could find, contacted the quality experts he could, and was enthusiastic to make continuous improvement happen at Mount Edgemont. He was the only one.
I came back and explained it to a lot of people and they said, that's, that's very interesting, now let's go back to work. And nobody really wanted to get involved. So what I did is started on the root level, and I started with a group of students and I trained students. And within a year, everybody, including management in the organization, suddenly saw a drastic change in those students and the way they talked and worked and their abilities and their ability to want to learn. And that's what made the change.
My whole role as a teacher has changed. I used to before do the research and then I'd present the material to the kids. That was no good. They didn't learn anything. I learned all kinds of, I learned all kinds of good information.
When they hand in their work, I don't serve as the judge and jury anymore. What I'm looking for is quality. And my job is to come back to them and point out where there's poor quality or where changes need to be made and where they can make improvement.
Yeah, continuous improvement's given me a way to surpass my goals by measuring my chart, you know, measuring what I've done in the past and now what I need to do to improve myself, to make myself go further in the future.
I got it done.
In Kathleen McCollum's English class, students are studying Homer's Odyssey. Rather than read the epic poem, then take a true-false test, they meet in groups to raise and discuss questions and they compare modern issues in America to the ones in ancient Greece.
And they have a lot of energy and enthusiasm for what they're doing, and that's what makes learning work. If it's somebody else forcing it down your throat, it's never gonna work.
New students that come into this system kind of go through a shock for a while because they can't quite believe that we could trust people that much. They can't quite believe that we would want them to take that much responsibility for their own education. When it first started into this process, I thought statistical analysis was ninety-nine percent of the process and human relations was one percent. Since we've been in it for two years, I'm now realizing it's just the opposite. We can teach anybody in a half an hour session how to do simple statistical analysis processing, such as Pareto charts and, and control charts and, and those types of things. We can't in a half an hour persuade people to use them. So it takes a long time for people to begin to absorb why they need to begin doing those types of things. Also, in human relations involves a whole new focus about working together in teams.
It must move into a different position this time.
A team of science students built this robot in the hope of making science as interesting as sports. And they did.
Yeah! And the crowd goes wild!
I think all the schools in the nation should implement this because if not, we're gonna be in serious trouble because we're just a hundred and sixty students up here. There's millions of people down there that are all gonna have to get in gear if we're gonna make it.
It is a good analysis. People everywhere are going to have to get in gear, and the gear is quality. Quality is a new way to think about, organize, and improve what you do. We have shown you successful programs in manufacturing, service, government, hospitals, and even schools. So while we are the first to admit that a quality program is difficult, clearly it is not impossible. Students from Mount Edgemont High School are often invited to explain the rather difficult concept of quality to other students and to adult industrialists. We were curious how they did it. Do you remember Snow White?
Snow White and the New Management System. Once upon a time, there was a family in a faraway kingdom. The king, Dr. Deming, was a very business-oriented man. He managed his whole kingdom. Dr. Deming was then called upon by the United States to implement his new management system in Japan. Snow White was then left with her wicked stepmother, Waste. Waste knew that if Snow White implemented quality, she would take over and Waste would be eliminated. The wicked witch of Waste sent Snow White into the Forest of Opportunity, where she met four woodland animals, named Will, Belief, Wherewithal, and Doing. In order to cause a change in any organization, the animal will explain that people must first want to change, then believe time did explaining that just wanting to change was not enough. People have to believe that changes can be made. Wherewithal explained that once Will and Belief have worked their magic, it takes statistical analysis and human relations to make the change stick. Then Doing said, once the first three have been completed, things just simply need to be done.
Snow White, of course, finds the Seven Dwarfs at the Seven Dwarfs Mining Company and begins to improve their lives with a quality program.
Meanwhile, in the ugly Castle of Waste, the magic mirror said, Snow White is alive and living in a cottage near a clearing. She is teaching seven dwarfs how to implement quality in their lives. The angry witch grabbed her magic book. She then turned herself into an old lady and contemplated her revenge. The old woman offered Snow White a shiny red apple. As soon as Snow White took a bite of the apple, she fell into a deep sleep of status quo, where things can never improve, they can only stay the same.
If you do remember Snow White, you know that she was awakened by a kiss from Prince Charming. The kiss this time comes from the prince of commitment.
And because of the prince's commitment and Snow White's quality, together they produced a beautiful daughter and named her productivity. And the kingdom continually improved forever. However, the moral of the story is, as soon as you reach the point of success, don't get caught biting the apple of status quo. Thank you.
There are any number of keys to a quality program, and which one is not one whom you ask. Senior management must be involved, that's a key. Training and education are key. Statistical analysis is a key. There is another key that seems difficult for people to accept, even though those who know American film classics should accept it easily. It's called cooperation across the board.
Then I'm sure to get a break. Ah-huh. Ah-huh. Deny. Oh. We're up to see the wizard, the wonderful wizard of Oz.
Without their close cooperation, no one of them could have reached the Emerald City and the Wizard of Oz alone. Eventually, each got what he or she wanted because each helped the others, and that concern for each other was the wonderful wizard. There is no exact recipe for a quality program. It would be easier if there were. What you can do depends on where you are. If you own a company, you can do quite a bit. If you work in one, you can do less, but you can do something. If you're a parent, you can help with public education. Of course, if you're the school superintendent, you can help even more. The only mistake is in believing that it is out of your hands, that you can do nothing, that one person will not make a difference. David Langford, a public school teacher, is one person. He made a difference. I'm Lloyd Dobbins, for all the individuals who worked on these programs and made a difference. Good night.
Yeah, I'm hearing tomorrow that y'all should bring in your eighties pictures to share with each other.
Well, I wanted to see, wanted to see what a terrible place it was to work. We had whales surfacing in front of the school. It was, it was very distracting. Yeah, place to work and stuff. So the school's still in existence today, and now they have over 600 students, and it's become the flagship school for the state. And basically has the same philosophy that we started at that time. And those students, I always laugh when I see that film, because now they, they run the state of Alaska. They, they run for offices there, all over. In fact, I was just talking to one last week that called me up, and they're still in contact with me and telling me what they're doing and what's happening. So it's amazing what can happen when you actually, you know, unleash what students can actually do and what they can actually become in the system. So that aired in about, in March, and when that aired at 2:00 in the morning, then the next morning I get a call from Monta. And she said, "I don't know what this is, or what you, what you did to them, but I think you, you have something that we want." And it just so happens that I had set up a two-day training in Dallas, the first, first training I'd ever done. And Leander brought eight people to that training in April of 1992. I, I didn't think too much of it. I met, met Monta and the team and everything there, and they were excited about what they were learning, et cetera. And I thought, well, that's probably the last I hear from them. And the next month, I get a call from another person in Leander. You may have heard of him, Tom Glenn. And he said, "Langford, we usually wind down at the end of the year." This was in May. He said, "These people are winding up. What, what do we do next?" And I said, "Well, you, you need to have a critical mass. You need to get more people involved." So I got the concept of critical mass from Dr. Demming in my work with him, because I started working with him directly from 1986, and I worked with him until he died in 1993. But he said, "In order to transform a classroom, a school, a district, you really only need critical mask, mass." And that's basically the square root of the organization. So you've got 100 people. You really only need 10 people, committed people, to see a massive transformation in a way of thinking. That was enlightening to me, because we, in education still today, everybody talks about getting everybody on board, and we have to have everybody on board. Well, when you understand statistical variation, you're never gonna get everybody on board for any movement, any change, anything that you want to have happen. You're, it's never gonna happen. And when I talked to Dr. Demming about the idea about critical mass, he was a physicist as well, and he talked about the, the tiny bit of plutonium you need to actually make a nuclear reaction is critical mass. And I love that concept of that, to think about transforming an organization now as large, at large as Leander is. At that time, Leander was merely 3,000 students in a very rural outpost of Austin, first time I visited. So Leander brought 40 people to the first four-day conference I did in Dallas in the summer of 1992. And that really launched that whole continual improvement thing. And then I started doing four-day conferences for Leander, and basically have worked in some aspect with Leander ever since, every year. I must have done 15, 20, four-day conferences with, here over the years and stuff. And then we just completed another one this last June. So what's the secret sauce, you know? What, what's, what's the big deal? What, you know, why did this make this kind of a transformation or, in the way of thinking? So I want to share with you what Demming taught me, and that what I brought first to a classroom, then to school, and now brought to districts all over the world. And that was the concept of profound knowledge. So people asked him, "Well, how do you make this transformation? How do you get people to, to go to, to the levels of performance that was never possible before?" He said, "You have to have profound knowledge." And we said, "Well, what, you know, what is that? We don't have any of that. No wonder he can't do that." So you have some, some blank paper in the supplies that you have. So I'm basically doing the kinds of exercises with you that I do with teachers and administrators anywhere. And what I want you to do is pretend you're back in kindergarten or even lower, and you're, you're going to put your hand on your paper, and you're gonna trace around your fingers, so that you have a nice tracing of your hand on the paper. Is that me that's scratching? There, is that better? You could decorate these later and put feathers on them and stuff, yeah. And take them home, show them to your kids, say, "Look what I did at the board meeting tonight." So Demming had this framework he called profound knowledge. And we're gonna get deeper and deeper into that tomorrow. But you have to have a framework or a compass to make decisions, or else you'll make bad decisions. If you want to optimize a system, you have to, by what method are you gonna optimize that system? What's gonna be the way you're gonna make decisions, or how are you gonna think about things? And so Demming came up with this concept of profound knowledge. So on the back of your hand, if you just write profound knowledge. Now, the first definition of profound in the dictionary is deep. So something that's profound is very deep, very, way to think about something. And Demming was an educator, and I think that was one of the reasons I was drawn to working with him, is that he was a teacher at New York University for 40 years. And when I went to his four-day conference the first time, I expected to hear all this lingo about industry and, and improvement in manufacturing, and, and I, yeah, I got that. But what I heard was a teacher and an educator talking about the need to transform education, which he saw as necessary if industry and businesses were gonna thrive on a worldwide stage. So I was just fascinated by this. So, and profound knowledge on your thumb, I'd like you to write appreciation for a system. Or you can just put systems thinking if you want to. Appreciation of a system or systems thinking. So Demming started telling organizations, "You have to start to think of yourself as a system." And later on tonight, we're gonna actually do some exercises as a board to get you to think about the board as a system. You're a system within a larger system, Leander, and you have special purpose, what you do, and how you work, and how you interact as well. But systems thinking is, is critical. When I described my story about where we hired the best teachers from all over the world, what we didn't have was systems thinking. So systems thinking is understanding the interrelationship of the parts to the whole, and understanding how those parts work together to create an outcome. So you can't just bring the best of everything together and then just hope it's just all gonna work. It takes leadership focused, it takes that kind of systems thinking. I heard an example one time, somebody said, "If you took the best transmission in the world, maybe it's a Rolls-Royce, or you took the best tires, and you took the best this, and you took that, and you put all these parts in one room, it wouldn't form an automobile. You, you couldn't do it, because the parts don't fit, don't work together." So it's the working together of the parts in the organization that becomes the magic. And Demming had lots of ways to teach people to work together at higher and higher levels. And in thinking about tonight and working with the board, that's, that's really what you want to think about. How do we work together at higher and higher levels to form a system that's, can make the best decisions for, for the district, right? So, and we'll get deeper and deeper into that as we go along, so. So you have systems thinking. So another finger, your index finger if you want. Second element is understanding theory. Or, Demming called it theory of knowledge, but it's basically just understanding theory. And theory drives everything that we do. So I remember when I first, one of the first times I started working was one of the high schools in Leander. And, and I asked assistant principal, you know, "What's my job?" And he says, "Well," I said, "What's your job?" And he says, "My job is, you know, is discipline, you know, this, and this, and this." And I said, "Do you have data on that?" And he said, "Yeah, you have data on that." And I said, "How long you been doing this?" And he said, "About seven years." And I said, "Okay, well, how have you significantly improved this in, in seven years' time?" And he looked at me like I was speaking a foreign language or something, and he said, "That's not my job." His job was just to manage the discipline system. And Demming often said that most people don't know what their job is. So in that case, getting him to understand, I tried to get him to understand that your job is to eliminate your job. How will you change this system? Change the way that teachers work with students? Change the way with, the way that you interact with the community? The upstream process that you have? How, how will you go about doing that and leading that so that you see changes over time? You see discipline just basically disappear, this concept of that? Which I often find funny anyway, because if you look up discipline in the dictionary, the first definition of that is training. So if you got a discipline problem, you got a training problem. You have not trained people well enough. And I think people miss that, and they just think, "Oh, well, let's just, let's just count the discipline referrals and, and keep running the system the way it is." So it's been very important to think about what, what theory are we operating off of? And in any, any decision that you're making, especially at a board level, you know, what is the theory behind this? We're, we're about to make a decision that could affect a system, but what's the theory behind this? What, what are we trying to do here? The third finger is understanding variation. So basically, I take, I take the word statistical variation. Now, Demming often said statistical variation, but I find if I say the word statistics with a group of educators, they kind of cringe, so. But it's just understanding variation. Yeah, it is statistical, but what, what do you do with the data that you have? You've got tons of data rolling into you all the time. And how do you make decisions about that? You know, how do you, how do you direct the superintendent to do different things? How do you, how do you interpret that data? What's important about interpreting, interpreting that data? And so we're gonna look at variation in performance. You know, there, there's differences between people. We've got eight, eight people on the team here today. All of you learn at different rates. You learn in different ways. If I gave you a difficult math problem, there's probably somebody on this team that could figure it out in a faster time than somebody else, right? And there'd be others of us that would still be working on it, you know, a couple of days. But we could, we could get it, we could figure it out. If I reversed that and I gave you a complex writing assignment, there'd probably some of you that could do that better, right? We don't seem to understand that in education. We don't run a system like that. We basically give kids tasks, "Do this by Friday, and if you don't," that's the deadline. It even has the word dead in it. "You're gonna be dead by Friday if you don't do this. Don't get it correct." And we think everybody can learn on the same timeline, at the same rate, speed, et cetera. And so for a huge part of the kids, we're boring them to death, because they don't need till Friday to get this done. And for another group of kids, they need, they need the time that they need, they need to actually learn it, to actually get it, to get it figured out. So getting teachers and getting people to think differently about that statistical data is extremely important. The fourth area is psychology. P-S-Y-C-O, C-H-O, so, psychology. So I was fascinated about the StrengthsFinder exercise that you guys were just doing, because that's what Demming talked a lot about in psychology. What's the psychology about how you get people to work together in a team to optimize that team? And understanding the strengths and, and even weaknesses of each other, so, you know, you can compensate for that, you can work together, you can, you can make changes with that. But now translate that to a whole system as large as Leander, and start to think about every manager in the whole organization getting kids to work together, understanding the strengths of kids at the beginning of the year, and how do you optimize a whole classroom and turn that into an organization where they're supporting and helping and cooperating at extremely, extremely high level? Demming was the first one that really, that I ever heard talking about cooperation. Then there were all kinds of movements that came out in education about the cooperative learning movement and things like that. But, which is good, but they didn't know anything about statistical variation. They didn't understand systems and how to change that. They didn't really understand the theory about why they were doing that in the first place, which is pretty interesting. In neuroscience, if you put people in cooperative groups, there are endorphins released in their brains that make them feel good. And that's, that's why you work together cooperatively in a group, where the opposite happens when you put people in competitive situations, when they're competing against each other to work through things. I'll never forget, early on working in Leander, we had a group of second graders that were giving a presentation at the annual conference. And I happened to be sitting in there, and the second graders were explaining how they work together in their classroom. And one of the people in the audience said, "What, what do you really like about working like this and working with your teacher in this fashion?" And this little boy, without hesitating, said, "I really like the dolphins." He meant endorphins. But clearly, he, he had a teacher that was talking about what happens when you work together and support each other and help each other in a classroom, rather than compete against each other to put somebody down, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. The fifth area is an area I added, but I, I still think if Demming was alive, that I could persuade him to add it to profound knowledge, and that's neuroscience or brain research. So, and the reason I add that is because Demming was super into it. That was, when I started attending his conferences, he had the best brain researchers around the world, and CAT scans were just starting to come out, and PET scans, and all kinds of things like that. We were just starting to learn about how brains work and function. He was fascinated by that. It's different than psychology. This is actually the physiological way that a brain works. And what is, what is learning, right? We're all here to, you know, we've got this wonderful Leander learning model up here, focus on student learning. What, what is that? What actually goes on in your brain that causes learning to happen? And how do you manage a system? And how do you manage a system in such a way to allow brains to actually make connections? And what are we doing as a system that are preventing those brains from making those kinds of connections? And to me, that's one of the primary ways that a board can really help in a system, is not to make policies and decisions, et cetera, that are going to keep brains from learning and making connections. And it happens all the time. I see it all over the world. They're making decisions, but they're not making decisions based on learning. What's good for learning in kids in the classroom? So, these five elements form the basis of what Deming called profound knowledge. And I want to challenge you tonight to start thinking about any decision that you're going to look at, look at it from a profound knowledge perspective, you know? What is the system or what we're doing? What's the theory of what we're really trying to have happen? Do we have the statistical data to understand how to make a good decision? And do we know how to interpret that statistical data? Or are we just guessing and doing guesswork on things? What's the psychological impact? If we make this decision, how's it going to affect parents, community, classrooms, kids, teachers, administrators? What's the psychological impact? And is a brain compatible? Right? Are we doing this in such a way that it's actually causing more neural connections to be made over a long-term, a long-term plan? Deming talked about, if you really want to know if a teacher's done a good job, interview kids 15 years after they've left the system and say, "Who are the most significant people that made an impact on your life?" And really, then you can pick a teacher of the year. Otherwise, it's just a lottery process that you can't, when you start to think about these games that we play as a system, and we put a lot of emphasis on it. We have whole big meetings where we announce teacher of the year and student of the month and do this and that. My daughter, I have five kids, and they're all long gone now. But I remember when she was in third grade, she came home with a certificate that said "student of the month." And I know the damaging effects of these things, so I was very nervous about it, actually. And I said, "Honey," I said, "What did you do this month that really distanced you from the rest of the losers?" And she looked at her certificate, I'll never forget. And then she looked back at me, and she got this big grin on her face, and she said, "Dad, you know it was my turn." Third grade. She saw right through the whole theory of what people were trying to do, and that she was just being manipulated, and this is just, this is what these people do, and so we just have to put up with it and deal with it. So, you know, what would happen if you changed a system based on profound knowledge? What could be the results of that? And what could be the impact, not only for Leander, but for the state of Texas and the nation and internationally now with what we do? So, that's really my challenge tonight to you, is as we move through this, to start to think about, wow, what really could, you know, Leander could become something that could transform the nation and become a Mecca. I told Monta, the first year we were here, I said, you know, "One of these days, people are going to be coming from all over the world to see what it is you're doing here." And she laughed at me. "Come to Leander, Texas, and within five years, that's what you had happening and still have happening, people wanting to come see what it is you're doing, what's happening here." Because it's a different theory, something different's happening. Now, is it happening everywhere? No. And you're growing so fast, adding 3,000 teachers a year or something, or some...
No. Can I have 3,000?
Three...
What do you know?
3,000 students a year. Maybe you have 3,000 teachers, but anyway, you're adding a bunch. And so, the challenge becomes, how do you manage that kind of system to optimize that to that level? So, we've already been sitting here about an hour and 15 minutes. And my research in neuroscience says adults shouldn't be doing that for more than about an hour and 10 minutes. So, I'm going to suggest that we take a break right now. And how long are your breaks usually?
Ten minutes.
Ten minutes? Okay, we'll take 10 minutes, so.
All right. Yeah. Yeah, I contacted them, and they're moving. They're moving. Yeah, they said it's about 15 miles north of me. And that's about like, you know, about 15 or 16 hours. But they sold the house, and they're going, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I've been there years, and she said, "But that's the last time I saw the CEO, you know, and practically just two years." It's no longer the spot that it's on. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I told them, "That's the..." He'd be moving, so. Yeah, no worries about it. You know, too much, yeah, too much, that's the... Yeah, good. Oh, yeah, well, that's the house that I'm asking maybe, people, people, and just keep the fire, yeah, but maybe, yeah. Yeah, I don't do, like, you guys name it, but I work with the formula and industry boards all over this place. And you can, every time I go and do something somewhere, I bet somebody comes up to the house, and I'm just, I was part of that. Yeah. Yeah, I was, I did a thing a couple of years ago, up in the last, um, six years. And anyways, I had whole bunch of individuals, people, and I've been with, and they said, "Try to don't..." I never asked them, and I did adult, for them, for some of the stuff. Some of them worked, but some of them, I mean, it's been after, and they said, "You know what they're, you know what they call the years, that when you're there and it's here, and someone's sitting there, that's the course of a hundred years." Yeah, yeah, some of them worked, some of them came back and they were fifteen years old.
All right. We are seven, wait, I'm going to wait two seconds so I can say it's 7:40, and we're back from our break, and we'll continue our discussions.
One of the ways I actually judge organizations is can they tell time? So, it's very impressive that you started on time. My common joke is I'll go someplace and get ready to start at 8 o'clock in the morning, and then we don't get started until 8:20 or something. I said, "What time do you usually start your 8 o'clock meetings?" And when I went to Argentina, the schedule said I was supposed to start at 8 o'clock in the morning. And so, I went down to the hotel, and I was all set up and everything, and I was the only one there. And I waited and waited and waited, and finally, the organizer came in about 9:00. And I gave him my joke. I said, "What time do you usually start your 8 o'clock meetings?" He said, "Oh, about 10 o'clock." And he was totally, totally serious about it. But we often ended up going till 8:00 or 10:00 at night as well, so, different system. So, I thought to start this segment in giving you a look at who Deming was and having him talk a little bit about things. He's a little bit difficult to understand, because he was in his 90s, which is also something else that I found fascinating when I went to his seminar. Here was this, at that time, he was 86, but he gave a four-day seminar two weeks before he died in 1993. You know, and we have this concept of old age, right? You know, you get to be 65 or 70, and you retire, and then you stop doing... You know, you get to be sixty-five or seventy, and you retire, and then you stop doing stuff, and, and you're supposed to, you know, get a yacht or something, and go on. And he had this concept that he, his job was to transform the world. And when you would talk to him and say, hey, how are you doing? And he'd say, I'm running out of time. And he, and indeed, he did run out of time, but his legacy still is around the world. And if you're in a corporation and you haven't been studying Deming, you don't understand quality. And it's also vital for every child graduating from high school nowadays to understand some ask, us, aspect of quality, because wherever you go to work, that's what you're gonna encounter. People are gonna focus on quality. Quality is the, the, the new economics of the world, and if you can't even produce quality, you're not gonna be in business. Because now you're, you're not only competing within the U.S., you're competing with every country around the world, being able to hit that level. So, anyway, I wanted to play this little clip, so you get a glimpse of Deming, and it's called The Deming of America.
I'm Priscilla Petty. Dr. W. Edwards Deming and a number of America's top corporate leaders warn us that America faces a crisis. We need to change the way we manage our businesses and our schools, or we will decline as a nation. Deming is the man who changed the Japanese thinking about management after World War II. You'll see how the heads of Xerox, Procter &amp; Gamble, GE Aircraft Engines, Ford, and General Motors are now changing their businesses because of Dr. Deming's theories. Why are these country's most successful business leaders listening to Deming's ideas now, when we were unwilling to listen back in the fifties? We need it now. We're in a global economy, and we have to compete with the best in the world, including today's formidable Japanese. Now, everyone's heard of the Japanese miracle, but not everyone knows the part that W. Edwards Deming, an American, played in that miraculous recovery. It was more than forty years ago when this PhD statistician began to work with the Japanese. And to fully appreciate what he did, to understand the magnitude of their recovery, we need to look back.
Japan, nineteen forty-six. World War II had left the country devastated. The once mighty industrial complex which had sustained their war machine was leveled to the ground. Their god emperor, Hirohito, now walked among them along the bombed-out streets as a mortal. In pre-war Japan, it was forbidden for ordinary citizens even to look on his face. With their basic beliefs shaken to the core, their leaders on trial for war crimes, their country devastated, and their factories in ruins, the Japanese people were at a turning point. Out of the ruins, they began to produce again. With typical Japanese ingenuity, they rose like a phoenix from the ashes, proving that they could even produce toys from the beer cans discarded by American GIs. Pre-war Japan had never had a reputation for quality. The words "made in Japan" were an international joke, standing for inferior quality, the toys that soon broke. They were at the bottom, with no way to go but up. If they were to escape their image as the makers of cheap toys, if the rising sun were to rise again, they knew they would have to change. The Japanese had experienced the quality of America's war machines firsthand in the skies over the Pacific. They knew that a noted Bell Laboratories physicist, Walter Schuhart, had helped guide America's wartime quality control effort. That one of his disciples was an American statistician, W. Edwards Deming. They also knew that Deming was already in Japan, having been assigned to work with them on their post-war census. Kanichi Koyanagi, managing director of the Union of Japanese Scientists and Engineers, invited Dr. Deming to lecture on his theories of management and quality improvement to a group of leading Japanese industrialists. Deming became more than a consultant, he was their guru. Between nineteen fifty and nineteen sixty, over twenty thousand Japanese had been trained in statistical methods.
I did not export American practice. I took to them new knowledge, philosophy of management, theory of management, which is. Optimization of a system whereby everybody gains, everybody gains. A Japanese man, executive or otherwise, is never too old or too successful to learn. He's eager to learn and to listen. It's not hard for him to change because he understands the system, that he is part of a system, and the job is to optimize the system.
Unlike the Japanese, we had been too busy and too successful to listen to Dr. W. Edwards Deming and his ideas about management and quality improvement. While our industries were coasting, Japan was rocketing into the twenty-first century on their bullet train. And by nineteen eighty, they had even surpassed Detroit for the first time, producing eleven million automobiles. Dr. Deming had told the Japanese they could turn things around in five years. They listened, and the rest is history. The Japanese have a saying, when the student is ready, the teacher will come.
It's only management that breaks out of the system, that makes impact.
Now, wait a minute, you say, management that breaks out of the.
Breaks out of the system.
Tell me what you mean.
Optimizes the system, for example. Instead of doing it the way we've always done it, to do what is best for the whole system.
Could we talk about optimization?
An orchestra is an example that most people can understand. A, a system, everybody there is supporting all the other players. Hundred-and-forty-piece orchestra, everybody supports the other hundred-and-thirty-nine. He's not there to play a solo. He's not to play as loud as he can play to attract attention. He's there to support the other hundred-and-thirty-nine. And the job of the conductor is to optimize their talents, their abilities. Ever heard of a bank that failed?
Yes.
You think it failed because of mistakes, snuggishness at the teller's windows, mistakes in calculation of interest, mistakes in bank statements? Don't be silly, all that could go off without blemish. And the bank would fail.
And the bank.
Purely a matter of management. The manager is a leader, should be. He understands how he, his work, and the work of his people fit into the system for optimization of the system as the first job of a leader. You try to find, recognize that all people are different. Try to fit each one into what he can do best, what he takes joy in doing, and help him to improve. He's coach and counsel, not judge. Judge people, you shut them, you shut them up, they don't talk.
What happens in a system when you ask someone to achieve a result that's impossible to achieve?
Everybody suffers. You'll make it happen by destruction of the company or impairment in some way, you'll make it happen, and we all lose. Anybody can accomplish anything if you don't count the cost.
When you set up a system that makes the individual, that puts the individual in an impossible situation, then he's going to do what he has to do.
If that's his job, then he'll make it happen. By fudging figures or by destroying the company. If you're a payment, that's his job.
So, you're saying that the component of the system is, is really responsible to the larger whole, to the benefit and the good of the larger whole?
That is a good way to put it. A component, any, any group, anybody, is to be judged by its contribution to the system, not for its individual profit or gain or sales or anything else. They've grown up on short-term thinking, short-term planning, profits and all, high dividends. Turning money. Impossible to advance under such forces.
I asked Dr. Deming why he felt American workers had not been turning out quality products.
How could they? All they ask is a chance to do a good job, to take pride in their job, and to be proud of the company, that's all they ask for.
This worker can't make that product better unless the system is changed.
He's gonna only make what he's asked to do under the, under the difficulties that he meets, with poor materials, equipment that doesn't work, all sorts of problems.
Our workers in this country have been blamed for a number of years, saying that they're lazy, and that they don't wanna work, and they don't care, and they're not producing quality, and they're not doing it right, and that's why our automobile industry went down, and that we have to change our attitudes as people. Is there, is there any truth in that at all?
Not a bit.
Not a bit?
Not a bit.
Not a bit.
Absolute nonsense.
Well.
We're getting nowhere on those people, as long as people think that.
Factory workers always have a question when they hear about Deming. They want to know, are you against unions?
Against, of course not.
Good.
Of course not.
Say that.
Union's part of the system, very important component in the system.
Now, what's been the problem, then, as people have dealt with unions?
Have not failed to understand the system, that's the problem.
So, we have people pitted against each other, union and management, rather than saying, this is a whole system which must be managed?
Optimization of a system should be the basis for negotiation between management and labor, between buyer and seller, with supplier to the company, between countries. If he goes into negotiation to defend his rights, he's already licked.
What do you mean?
It's, I am should be optimization of the system by which you gain more than any other way.
So, if I'm just going in, I'm thinking only of my own self-interest? I'm a factory worker, and I want a higher wage?
You're a country, or anybody.
Or I'm a country, or I'm anybody, and I'm thinking only of myself, and not thinking of the total system, then I'm gonna lose?
Defend your rights, you lose.
How do the people without power, how do they not be taken advantage of? Everybody is not of goodwill.
Purely a matter of understanding. He is in power, must understand the system, and the best solution is for everybody to win, everybody to gain, no loser.
It's so foreign to us. It is not what we've been taught, it's not what we've done.
Economists have led us down the wrong road. They've taught us adversarial competition is a solution, it is not.
Now, you're distinguishing.
Worried about share of market, try to choke your competitor. Spend your time that way, instead of working on the product, to develop a better product.
So, what do you do instead of compete for share of market?
Expand the market, put out better product.
It's a different philosophy, it's as if we're saying there's a finite amount versus an infinite amount here.
I think that's a good way to put it. People make supposition that the market is a, a finite amount. And the successful companies have taken the other point of view, that the market is expansible. By taking attention to the future needs of consumers, they expand the market.
So, you don't worry so much about being an adversary to your competitor, you worry instead about, what, continual improvement of your own product, and getting something better out there, and looking to your own system to enhance.
That helps both people, you and your competitor, it's just a law of nature. He is spending time worried about his competition, worried about his share of market, it's already licked. If having his stock of that company, a better sell it. Competition is part of the system, and a competitor that improves the product, improves the market, helps his competitor. And the worst thing that could happen to you is to have a lousy competitor. Customer doesn't know what he wants, he makes a choice, he does not see his future needs. Customer's expectations are only what you and your competitor have led him to expect. He's a rapid learner, but he does not foresee what he might need. No customer asks for electric lights. No customer asks for photography. No customer asks for a telephone, or for telegraph.
How has the prevailing style of management crushed innovation?
Unranking people, starts with grading in schools, from toddlers on up through the university, grades, ranking people, making top people scarce, only so many As allowed. This is not a game. In playing tennis, a beauty contest, horse race, play poker, it's a game. Somebody wins, we knew that before we started. Perfectly all right, have nothing against it. His management is serious, education is serious.
We are so used to, in this country, to ranking people, to being ranked ourselves, and those of us who want to achieve, always wanna make sure we're ranked at the top in whatever system we are. It's just counter to our usual thinking, and, and even I get a little scared when I think, well, what would happen if you weren't evaluated, or, or ranked? Uh, you know, how does it work if I'm not going to be ranked? Will I be rewarded for the results that I produce in the hard work?
You want reward?
Yes, yes, I want reward.
The reward that you want is pride and joy in your work, that's what you want.
Yes, you're right, that's the first reward.
It's the only thing you ask for.
But I also want money sometimes when I'm.
Pay is not a motivator.
Sometimes?
No.
No?
No. Pay is not a motivator, sure you have to have enough to live on, to live right. Beyond that, pay is not a motivator. Remember Norb Keller's statement, that I think is famous. On the seventh, seventh of November, nineteen eighty-seven, Mr. Norb Keller and General Motors, in a meeting, stated that if General Motors were to double the pay of everybody, commencing the first of December, nothing would change. Performance would be exactly what it is now. Ranking doesn't do any good. If two people wanna be worse than another, and wanna be better, I don't know what we'll do about it. The question is, is one outside of control limit? Or does the difference mean nothing? And management must know these things, there is no excuse, there's excuse for ignorance, but there's a penalty for ignorance, and we all pay it.
What is an alternative? What can they do instead?
To help, be coach and counsel, and help, and optimize, don't judge. We need to develop self-esteem, dignity, joy, and pride in work, so that people may be innovative and contribute their best to the job. If we destroy them, they're humiliated. Ranking them destroys them.
The question is, are our business leaders really taking the responsibility which is theirs? Are they educating themselves that they need this, and they don't admit it to themselves?
They'll know about it, how could they admit it when they don't know about it? But how could they know? How could they know there's anything to learn? How could they know? How could they have any suspicion that there's anything to learn? How could they?
Well, I think they should know.
How could they? How could they?
They ought to know.
How could they? Themselves. Profound knowledge comes from the outside, never from the inside.
This is.
It comes from the outside, and by invitation.
When you say knowledge must come from the outside, what do you mean? I don't quite understand.
Do you ever find it inside a company?
Well, sometimes, some part, some part.
Have you?
You, are you talking about profound knowledge, or you're talking about knowledge? Profound knowledge.
Profound knowledge, knowledge about a system.
Why is that? I mean, why can't it come from inside the company? What do you think's going on?
Everybody's doing his best. With the greatest, with the best intentions, everybody, working hard, and doing what is wrong, not guided by a theory of management. Reactive behavior, managing by results, sure they want good results, managed by results, quality goes down, morale goes down. Management has not a fear of management. They work hard, very hard, under terrible stress that I could not endure.
Are they willing workers?
Best efforts with hard work.
The management.
A ruination.
And you're talking about CEOs, and presidents, and vice presidents, and all other people who are in charge.
Government, people, people in education.
And we're missing it somehow, we're missing the real point somehow.
Pretty obvious. Deming's second theorem, we're being ruined by best efforts and hard work, doing this, doing what is wrong.
What are they missing?
Fear of management.
So, how can we tell them? How can we tell them that they need to learn this? How can we get that message out?
A physician can do nothing for somebody that does not acknowledge that he needs help. First step, he must ask for it.
Many leaders in this coun-
Stop there. So, this is a weird way for me to work, 'cause I'm usually have people in teams and groups and tighter, so I'm trying to navigate this, to work it through, but I don't want this to be a one-way kinda thing, so. But I don't want this to be a one-way kind of thing, so what kinds of questions are coming to mind? You're hearing these radical things being said and... Yeah, yeah, just imagine trying to work with him. It was.
I mean, when he was saying, like, ranking is something that destroys people, it's a problem, I was just thinking, but, there's so many other systems out there and it's just one of those things that seems to be required.
Yeah, the year before I met Dr. Demming, I had just taught my entire staff how to rank people to one one-thousandth of a point on a grading scale and because we had too many valedictorians. And then the next year I met Dr. Demming. To what level are you going to keep going? You know, 4.0 wasn't good enough, so we had to go to 5.0 and then, I don't know, where are we, 6.0 now and then now, you know, the nth degree? Something has to change, see? And if you want to optimize a system and see vast numbers of kids achieving at a level that you've never been able to achieve before, then you're not going to get it by just keep trying to do the same thing and expect a different result. It just doesn't work. I didn't understand that until I actually put it to work in my own classes. And I had a group of advanced kids I was working with, there was only seven of them and I thought, well, I'll experiment with them because I can't screw them up too much. And so I just came into them and I said, you know, I think you're all going to get As, so I'm just going to give you As anyway. And they didn't believe me, so they made me get on my grade book and actually show them that I was giving them As. And I said, now, now why are we here? And somebody said, to get good grades. Well, you just got good grades. So now why are we here? Well, it took us a whole week of having those discussions for them to come to conclusions that we were actually there to learn. And so I did the same curriculum that I'd always done, taught the same things I did and I kept grades on the sides and sure enough, all of them got As. Or pretty much the same results that I'd gotten before. The ranking did nothing. And when you took the threat away, the fear in education is we take away this ranking, this grading system and this kind of thing, that everybody will just quit and give up. Well, the opposite happens. You start to see people achieving at levels that you never thought possible before. It's a fascinating, it's a fascinating thing.
I think my point is, yes, you can, you do that in your class or maybe even in the school, but I'm thinking beyond our area. So for example, the state has its requirements, colleges have their requirements and they all seem to fall within that whole ranking.
Yeah, it's not, it's not even nearly as bad as it was 30 years ago. There's colleges all over that are getting rid of SAT scores as admission requirements and all kinds of things. It's fascinating because we're so bent on getting kids into college and keeping that data and understanding that, and that's a good thing. The dirty little secret is, the percentage of kids who flunked out of college in the first year is huge. Universities don't like this information getting out. Some places as high as 16, 80% of freshmen don't continue for four years. So what would you have, what would have to happen or how would you have to train students to be successful in that environment anyway? Well, it has to come from a system's perspective, going upstream in the process. I mean, what you're doing with your graduate profiles are really good example of that, you know? These are the skills, this is the thinking, this is the processes we want kids to have when they come out of here and we believe these things are going to benefit them in the future. Well, if that's really what you're after and what you want to find out, you want to start thinking about, well, how can we find out? Five, 10, 15 years after they leave here, did we actually do something that enabled our kids to do better than others? And when I started this with our high school, people thought I was nuts. And we actually started tracking and found out that five years after they left, we picked five years to really do an in-depth study, 95% of them were filling meaningful positions in society. And our graduation rate of college kids, even though our kids didn't have the same test scores and SATs to get into colleges, et cetera, et cetera, but our success rate of graduating was so high that universities started calling us, saying, can we come and interview your students? Because we know they're going to be here for four years and they're going to finish. That's a whole different way to start to think about, you know, what do you want the system to produce?
A little bit, I sort of searched up the Demming's 14 points, because I was curious. But the number eight where it says drive out fear, I think part of what you're talking about with the changes that we're starting to make with graduate profile and the mastery-based learning and not just grades. And I know Dr. Gearing and I have talked about this and I've talked about this a couple of times with Jennifer Collins as well, about how, like, I've got a kiddo who does very well, being able to give oral answers. They've got dysgraphia and so writing is very hard for them. And so being able to have that accommodation in his 504, to be able to give those oral answers, to prove that he has the knowledge, because he wants to learn, but they're ready to learn and move on, let's go, you know, let's keep going.
Learn and forget.
Well, well, learn, but learn, be able to prove it and move on, instead of this ticking boxes, right? And so I think that number eight where it says drive out fear, I think it's this fear of change and fear of doing something different and this is the way we're always used to doing it. I think that that's, that kind of reigns true for me, just because even in my own family, it's that, why does the system have to be this way? Why can't we do X, Y, Z? And these kids have great ideas, you know, if we just sit and listen.
Yeah, if you have fear in the organization, you're not going to have creativity. Because people can't, can't be creative if they're living under that kind of environment and working through that. You know, I'll talk to teachers sometimes and they'll even go in their classes and I don't have fear in my class. Sit down, I told you to sit down. There's no fear in my class. So it's one thing to say it, it's another thing to actually look at the system and see it and root out that fear. I think Monta took that really to heart for 30 years and worked hard to make sure that you were continually driving out fear in the organization and looking at all the ways that you do things, you know, to drive that fear out. I'll give you a good example with Leander. One of the first times that we had your two-day conference, I drove up to the school, the high school where they were having the conference and there was a line out the door and a block long. And I walked in, I said, what's going on? Oh, everybody's signing in. What are they signing in for? Oh, because if they don't sign in, you know, they'll take off and they won't be here and we won't know they were here, whatever. And we found out later that people were signing in and then leaving and stuff. But that's a good example of fear, using fear to try to control people and you think you're doing something. And you're not doing anything at all. In fact, when I got them to stop doing that and start trusting people to show up on time and concentrate on the product of the conference, that it was so interesting, so valuable, that if you weren't there, you'd miss something significant. We couldn't find anybody that wasn't, that wasn't showing up and going there. So I think it's a good example of small things that can turn into really big impact for employees and people within that organization, so. What else?
There was a few things similar to Sade where I was like, yeah, I can get behind that, but, you know, and the GPA and rank, I think that we've made strides there, but still, there was, well, we have to have some level of it. But when he talked about pay and that salaries and pay wasn't a motivator, I was like, eh, that one was hard for me. I don't know, when I hear someone say that, I also think, I wonder if that person ever lived in poverty? I wonder if that person ever had food insecurities? When someone says, like, pay isn't important, because I definitely think teachers do not become teachers for the pay. It's not because, oh, I'm going to be a teacher, I'm going to be a millionaire. But I do think that pay, it shows that you're valued and that you're able to do this and make a, you know, pay a mortgage and have a, be able to do things and take care of your family. So I think to say that it's not a driver at all, I don't know if I'd agree with that.
The research on this is crystal clear, it's not a motivator, it's a satisfier. So you have to give, you may be in a job you love, but you're getting paid so, yeah, you're getting paid so low that you have to leave a job you love to take a job you hate because you need to make more money, right? You're not satisfied within that. On the other hand, when people are in organizations that they value tremendously and loved working there, but they can't pay them as much as someplace else, they'll stay because they know, where will I find this anyplace else? And that's what Demming is talking about, so.
I've seen some of that research. I also think the research that I've seen on it, it's skewed for people who have grown, it has a lot to do with your upbringing, because if you were born in poverty or came through poverty and have, like, people at home in poverty, the driver is making more money because you have a whole bunch of other people that you've got to get to the other side, so.
Again, that's just a satisfier kind of thing. So you will leave an organization even if you're being paid more. I saw it in Alaska, teachers are being paid triple what they were anyplace else in the world and people wouldn't stay over a year because the system was so terrible and the management was so terrible. And it was, I was of the same mind as you until I experienced that personally and saw what happened. You couldn't pay people enough. People would say, you can't pay me enough to put up with this. And they weren't talking about the kids, they loved the kids, they couldn't stand the system that they were working in, so, good question.
One of the things I heard that was interesting in addition to what's been mentioned was where he talked about the disadvantage of a business, a company, an enterprise with lousy competitors. And I think public education is an interesting example because in some cases we're kind of a monopoly where our competitors are very small, very niche, and we don't have true competitors like a lot of other organizations. And so the effect on innovation in various aspects of what we do, I think, is meaningful. That's not to say that innovation doesn't happen and all that sort of stuff, but it changes the culture of the organization in a way that can be counterproductive.
Yeah. Early on and when Leander started to expand and you started to see building communities going up, Realtors found out it, they put up big signs that said, "Students will go to the Leander school system," cause people to buy houses here. And because the reputation of the district was becoming so strong that people, they would actually come and say, is my child going to go to Leander versus somebody else? So in a sense, yes, we are, we are competing against other places. There's also multiple, multiple stories and examples about people that had their kids moved from other places in the country to come live in Leander because they wanted their kids in this school, in this school system, and that drives growth and taxes and that's what enables the system to actually work and function at a different level. So, in a way, we are competing against other districts, but I really don't care what's happening in Round Rock or Dallas or anyplace else. I might find it interesting to compare Leander scores to somebody else, say, okay. But the real question is, you know, what are we doing about it and how are we moving forward? And the comparisons don't match up anyway, because it's apples and oranges about what you're dealing with at different levels. When you look at scores like that and measurements, I took three years out from 2016 to 2019 and became a superintendent in Los Angeles. And they were trying to do that, make us compete against other schools. We were running charter schools and we were the spearhead for the immigration movement. So we would have 60, 70% of our kids were first-generation English speakers, you know, in one school, we're being compared to schools that don't have that 10 miles away. It's just, it's a totally different problem that we were dealing with and what they were dealing with, but they're trying to use the same measure to compare things. And it's the same way, you know, when you look at test scores statewide. So test scores are a good thing, right? But are you going to improve test scores at the detriment of the rest of the system? That's what Demming was talking about. Anybody can improve anything if you don't count the costs. Or if you make an arbitrary goal and say, oh, we're going to improve test scores by 5%. Well, where'd you get 5%? Why didn't you pick up 6.8? That's a number I like. And I asked Demming one time, I said, where do people get these arbitrary goals and do this? And he said, they come from only one possible place, they have seances. And believe it or not, I've been in board meetings where I thought, they're having a seance. Because they're having a big debate about, you know, should we have a goal to improve by 10%? Well, you may be setting the goal too low, right? The system may be capable of 20% increase, but because you only said 10%, that's all you're going to get. Or it may be so high because the system can't do that, that people will make decisions and do things to the detriment of the organization. So we're going to get deeper into that, but these are really good questions, really.
One of the things that I liked was where he said it's not an adversarial system and just basically getting to where everybody wins. And so that's, I found that interesting.
Yeah, but if you really want to, if you really believe that's your theory and that's where you want to go, then you have to start looking at all the things you're doing in the system that are preventing people from getting there. I believe that it is and built into the human condition to want to cooperate, support and help each other. But we do things to prevent people from doing that. For instance, you don't have enough time to meet and do stuff. Ah, well, that's a systems thing, right? How can I work together when I don't have time to do that?
And just the last one, just to develop joy, self-esteem and all of that in people, because otherwise you can just break them. And everything you're putting in there would be for nothing because they just cannot respond.
So Demming was the first one I ever heard talk about joy and learning and joy and work. And I was, it was like a slap in the face to me at that time, it was like, what? We have to be concerned that kids are happy in school? This is just nuts, craziness. But that's why the fifth element is neuroscience. Unless you have that joy in learning, you're not learning. You may be getting grades, but you're not learning anything because the brain's not making the kinds of connections, so. All right, so I want to get us, we have one more? You have a comment?
I was just going to say, I guess one thing I really enjoyed watching that video was it kind of relates to what we're going through right now in our current, going on with the bond and everything. And one thing that stuck out with me was respect the product. And we had our demographic report last board meeting and we know we have four charter schools coming in this area, so we have to find a way to respect the product we have, but also optimize the system. So for me, I was able, it really helped me resonate to what we're going through and going back to the neuroscience, a big thing we talk about as a board when we're talking about student achievement and their outcome is individual education plans for every student. And so, I don't know, I just was able to connect and see that and relate to what's going on right now and just, he's right. I mean, we've got to, you know, if we're going to change the system and be the Mecca, like you said earlier, we've got to learn how to see what the quality work is and respect the product.
Yeah, I found that out firsthand, working in Los Angeles. Now, 50% of all the students in LA Unified School District are in charter schools. And what do they complain about? They complain about getting rid of charter schools instead of working on the product of what they're doing is the learning. So, which brings me to, some people want to think of students as products and they're not. The product of an education system is learning, is the learning working? And you really want to start to think about students as the... And you really want to start to think about students as the workers in the organization, right? They're doing the work of learning. So just like in a corporation, you would enlist the help of the people doing the work to improve the product or to prove the quality of what it is you're doing. It's the same thing in schools. Learning is the product, students are actually part of the system that help you achieve that. And when you have that kind of concept in your mind all the time, you get a whole different way that you look at things. You don't look at students as inanimate objects that we do things to. You don't have meetings and then surprise kids with, oh, now we have a new rule, a new regulation that they knew, had no input in and were not involved in at all. You start seeing that, oh, they have to be part of the organization in every decision that goes on. Same way within a classroom. They have to be able to be a part of every decision that goes on within the classroom. And when you start changing that, you get a magical environment happening in the classroom where the kids feel like they, this is our class, we own this, this is what we do. And they can explain curriculum, they can explain the assessment system, they can explain anything. And that's why I started introducing to Leander years ago, student-led conferences, right? Have the students lead the conference instead of the teacher. And you get a massive shift in thinking. And I've been in those sessions where parents come out of those sessions crying and they'll say things like, I never knew my child was so smart. But you'll never get that if you maintain a teacher-parent-conference kind of thinking process, so. What you have to constantly think about is if you want a better result, change the system. Instead of what we've been taught to do, leave the system alone and then manage the defective behavior it produces. So you have to start thinking about expanding what is good continually instead of getting rid of what is bad, which our systems were largely designed to do that or to think about that, ways to think. And it applies to special education, it applies to anything that you want to think about in the process. So you get me going and then we'll be here for four days, so. All right. I want to get us into some more concrete kinds of ways to look at things. And I've also been challenged to sort of try to help you think about this upcoming bond issue and the issues around that and what can you do as a board. So I want you to grab the books that you have, the Tool Time books. So, this is a work of continual improvement. It started in 1986 when I first started learning about stuff. And it wasn't enough just to have theory, I had to have concrete ways to actually do things. It's, you know, you've got the theory, but then what do you do on Monday morning? So just open it up in the middle here somewhere and you will find what we call tools or methods. And you've already been exposed to those. I know that Dr. Grissom's been doing some tools with you and so you have some insights with that, et cetera. And hopefully, in these two days, you'll get more insights and see the value of using tools to a higher and higher level of thinking. On the left-hand side of the page, you have, you know, what is the tool, why do we use it, sample uses, that kind of thing. And on the right-hand side of the page is the process. And I tried to write this so that it can be used in elementary schools, high schools, it can be used in board meetings. Now we have a Tool Time book for businesses and a lot of times I'll get comments from business leaders and they'll look at it and say, well, this looks like a coloring book or, or they'll tell me things like, this is so simple. And then I'll get a phone call about two weeks later or two months later and they'll say, this is so simple, it works! Right? Because that's the whole point, is to use a tool quickly to gain insight and learning and then move on. So it's not about the tools themselves. So let's go to the first, let's go to the tool called parking lot. These are in alphabetical order. And if you're the first one to get the page number, you can share it with somebody, so it's not a competition, so. So you may have seen parking lots around Leander in your business and schools and things like that. But I wanted to start here because this is where I started. So over here on the wall, we have a parking lot on the side. So, my first job, my first year of teaching, we had a suggestion box in the foyer. And it was a wooden box that had been made in the shop and had a slit in the top and it had a big padlock on it. And I thought, well, that's really, that's really nice, you know? And periodically, I would see students put stuff in there. And then one day I was in the teacher's workroom and somebody said, let's go get the suggestion box. And I thought, oh, here's the big moment that we're going to apply these suggestions. And we dumped it out on the table and they'd look at them and they'd read something. A lot of them had profanity in them and stuff. And they'd read something, they'd laugh, oh, look, they want to do this. And then they'd throw it away and they'd put the padlock back on the box, put it in the foyer. That's the game that a lot of organizations have learned to play, to pretend to listen to people and pretend to take action with them. And pretty soon, people don't offer any suggestions because they know nothing's going to happen with that, right? Then I learned about an issue bin. You could have an issue bin and put that on the wall and people could hit issues and... But gradually it progressed until I came up with this concept of a parking lot, which has now been used worldwide. And it's so simple and easy way that you start to get feedback from people in any organization. So I want to use that with you in these two days. So, we have sticky notes out? Yep. So you've got sticky notes. So anytime that we're going through stuff, I'm not going to be able to get to all your questions, background, et cetera, but anytime you think of something going on, or if you think of something you really liked in this, these two days, right? And it's going well, that's a plus sign, right? So you're going to write that down, you're going to put that beside you. If you think about something that you think should be improved, like maybe you think, okay, we're watching too many movies. Okay, that's a possible improvement, right? That's the triangle and that stands for Needs for Improvement. It's a delta sign. That's why it's called Delta Airlines. Continually needs improvement, so. The I is for ideas that you might have. So ideas about how you want to change up the format of what we're doing, what's happening, what's going on. I'm always open to new ideas. In fact, a lot of the ideas in this book came from people just like you that said, hey, have you thought about this? And incorporated it and that worked. And then questions that are emerging. So as we're going through, anytime you think of something, you just jot it down, put that on there. Whenever we take a break, go up and you put them on the chart and put them in those four quadrants, right? So, when I started doing this with students, it was just fascinating to me. First, they didn't trust me, right? And they'd say, what are you going to do with these? And I didn't know what to do with them either. But then actually, when I started getting some things up, so Needs for Improvement, I'd read something, and it was very fascinating. I'd start to get things like, you talk too fast. I don't understand your accent. Things that I never even thought, I didn't even know how to, didn't know I had an accent. So, things I'd never thought of. And then all of a sudden, ideas started coming up. Have you thought about doing this or doing this or rearranging the classroom like this? And it was just amazing when I started taking some of those and say, what can I do, right? Might not be able to do all these things, but do something, right? And every time we did something, magic started to happen. People started to realize that, oh, you're serious. I remember one time we had a transient student came in in the middle of the school year in one of my classrooms and I actually sometimes would give students time to do a parking lot. Just take five minutes and do a parking lot exercise, you know? Think about all the things that you want to put on the parking lot in this five minutes. And this kid was blowing it off and he wasn't doing it or whatever. And another kid said to him, you better take this serious because he's going to do whatever we tell him. See? So it does have a magical transformation. So we want to use that here as an initial way to start to get feedback from you guys and that'll feed into tomorrow. See, it doesn't do any good for me to give you a survey at the end tomorrow, though I will have a bit of evaluation that I want to get from you. Because if you give me all this stuff, right, it's too late. We've already gotten to that point where I can't correct anything, I can't do anything different, I can't make a change. I just go away feeling bad. And that's the problem with evaluation versus feedback. People respect feedback, they don't respect evaluation. So, you know, if you're going to rank me, evaluate me, et cetera, that's not good. If you're going to give me feedback and how I can improve and what I can do differently, that's a whole different ballgame, right? So, all right. Second thing I want you to do is turn to Consensogram, starts with a C. Wow. She gets the page number award.
No, no, we're going to be a competition.
So we have these five elements of profound knowledge, right? Somebody tell me one without looking at your hand. Brain research.
Neuro-brain.
Same thing, neuroscience, brain research. Tell me another one. Psychology, system thinking. Theory of knowledge. We've got that. And understanding variation, theory of system, understanding variation. Okay, so you're getting it, so. All right, so with the Consensogram, this is another tool, simple, simple tool. It gives you an indicator about what's going on. And we're actually going to do this here today. So with a Consensogram, basically what you're trying to do is find out, do we have consensus? And I did this with my board in Los Angeles and I've done it with other boards, et cetera. Before they would actually have a vote on something, we would do a Consensogram to see, do we have consensus on this? Are we ready to take a vote? Because if we don't have consensus on it, it's just going to set up adversarial relationships on the board. And the more we do that, the worse we get, right? So it was just an indicator to say, maybe we need more information or we need more data or we need something else with that, okay? So I want you to take one of the large square sticky notes that you have. I have a question for you. And Deming talked a lot about systems optimization, optimizing a system. Is it functioning at the highest level it can possibly function, given the money that you have and the people that you have and the time and all those kinds of things? So think about your perspective about where Leander is today. And I want you to think of a number between 0 and 100% and 10% increments. So that would be like 10, 20, 30, 40, okay? 100% would mean Leander's at 100%. Yeah, I mean, we're just totally optimized and I don't see ways that we could possibly get better, it's the best it could possibly be. And if you say, well, I don't think it's quite 100%, okay, well, what is it? Is it 90, 80? You know, where is it? All the way down to zero, I don't think we're doing anything right, right? The only thing I ask is don't put down any negative numbers. So, only zeros the lowest you can go. So think, if somebody from another planet or another district came and asked you that question, what would you say? We're at 60% optimization, 80%? Where would you put your number? Don't put a name on here or anything, just write down a number. And I have my lovely assistants. They're going to pick those up. So I said, that's why she got a doctor's degree to be able to do this, so.
All right, so I think I need some clarification. I'm talking, it's me.
So they're going to...
I have a question.
Put those over on a chart.
I have a question. And it has to do with something you said at the beginning regarding consensus. What, that as a board, we need to, the question about do we have consensus before voting? I'm still trying to understand why.
Yeah, it doesn't hold any weight, it's just giving you more knowledge about, you know, where's our consensus level.
Okay.
So, we already got the data out there. It's pretty easy to do when you only have eight people, so. So let's take a look at this and maybe that'll help, kind of think about it. So what is that data telling you? Yeah, got some work to do. What else does it tell you? I've done this with, you know, employees in other districts when the highest number out of 200 people was 50%. That really tells you, they're not happy there about what's going on with that. You're going to always have a curve, right? From high to low, right? You've got a lot of people think very strongly that this is, we're doing a good job. But we can always get better, right? And that's where the concept of continual improvement comes in, right? What's the next step? Where do we go from here? How do we get better? How do we optimize it? So, I have another question for you. So take another sticky note. And I said earlier that I want to start getting you to sort of think about yourselves as a system, the board as a system, right? So where do you think the board is on that scale from 0 to 100%? Are you totally optimized in the work that you do and at 100% or not at all or somewhere? Now you have a perfect curve. So what are your thoughts about that?
I'm glad we're here.
This, I think to me, shows what we were talking about on our survey because board wants to do board work so we can help move the needle. But how are we confident in that we are making those decisions that make a difference, that really do an impact? I don't think we're recognizing that we're able to make that impact we want yet. I find it interesting that we are more critical of ourselves.
Yes, or you could say you have a high opinion of yourselves. So when you start looking at a system, you want to just start getting indicators about what's going on, you know? Where do we start? You know, if I was to do this in a classroom and say the very same thing, you know, how do you think our class is going, on a scale of 0 to 100%? And everybody in the class puts a number from 70 to 100%, I'm probably not going to stop class long enough to work on stuff because, right? I already have a good indication that things are going really well, kids are happy and things are happening. On the other hand, I had a math teacher one time, he said, I've never asked that question. I said, why? He says, because the highest kid in the class would put down 20%. Dude, you've got a long way to go, right? Working that through. So, Deming talked about two things, that you want to constantly move the average up and at the same time shrink the variation. So we have this big curve here, right? And the more we can find out ways to keep moving the average up and... And the more we can find out ways to keep moving the average up and shrinking the variation, pretty soon we can get to a point where the lowest person in the room is 80%, and our average is 90. So, a lot of people don't quite understand that, even in classrooms even, that my job is to improve the average performance and shrink the variability, so they have more and more kids achieving at higher and higher levels. If you apply the same concept to school, you don't think about artificially stratifying and ranking people, so we only have one valedictorian, you start thinking about, out of a high school of 2,000, or a graduating class of 500, could we have 499 valedictorians? 499 people that get to that level? Well, that's shrinking the variation and improving the average at the same time, instead of thinking of ways to prevent those things from happening. Anyway, I'll get off my soapbox, alright? So, I want you to turn to systems analysis. Now we got the page for you, 132. And let's see if we can do this. I'd like you to get out of your chairs and come over here somehow. Can we do this so we can, would it work to do it this way? Maybe stand at the sides, or? Oh, I'm sorry, you're going to need your books, so. So, could get more on this side if we need to, and, okay. So, Deming talked about that, you know, with a system, you have to have a diagram for a system. And a systems analysis on page 133 is just a simple systems diagram that I use with people all the time to get them to start to think of themselves as a system. So, in the middle here, I'm just going to put... Okay, so you have the Board of Education in the middle, and you have activities, responsibilities, things that you do within this, right? You guys, don't you call yourselves a Board of Education? No, what do you call yourselves? Sorry.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
You know what we're talking about, Steve.
Alright, so now, who, what are the inputs that come into the processes that you do? What are the preceding stages that?
Administration.
Yep.
Yeah, so that's just the parents.
Ah.
No, because admin is under, because it's underlying, she's asking if this is, you're talking about administrative inputs or this admin is more of the district.
Yeah, you're wanting to think about the preceding stages that inform your decisions and what you do. Teachers.
Just put data.
Okay, and then on the right-hand side, if this was a company, we'd be talking about that you do? So you do this, right? And then who's affected?
Community.
I work for it.
Right.
Something like a community.
You're firing so fast, I couldn't write that fast, so.
Don't, you have more registered data and state.
Admin.
Yep. Okay, and then what I want you to think about is, what are your system measurements? Well, I'm thinking more about the function of the board.
Function of just the board.
Yeah. How do you guys know that you're doing a good job? Or?
You get elected.
You don't have to wait four years.
Yeah, you don't have to wait four years to know that.
What are you doing internally to know that you are?
You're using the, this thing that you're doing.
Oh, the correlation chart? Ah.
We started with.
Nice.
And so that, it allows us to, when we remember, to go over what we liked about the meeting and something like that.
Now we have the P3, the group survey.
Say that again, like informal.
Email.
Yeah, just community.
Almost like general survey, like on a business survey.
Anything else?
Like be a bigger study.
Okay, so, and we can take this and start to expand on it, build on it, and make a
diagram out of it, and make it something more and more useful as time goes by. But Deming talked about that this is a loop, that you have feedback coming into here, and you have feedback that comes to here, and vice versa. Because feedback that you're getting from these people affect that and what you work through. And you brought up Deming's 14 points. The first point is to have a constant C of purpose, okay? So, that's the top part of this, or the aim of the organization. So, I'm going to take you through another little exercise, and have you kind of come up with, what is the aim of the board? Or the aim or the purpose of the board? And see if we can't come to some agreement, to some degree, a consensus on, you know, what is that? What is our aim? What are we trying to do?
Different from the core belief.
Yes.
As a part of the organization.
Yep.
Well, let's help that.
Yep. I call it an out-of-body experience, where you step out of your role for a second, and look at it, and then come up with this, and then step back into operations. Because Deming talked about, if you don't have an aim, you don't have an organization, you don't have a purpose about what it is you're doing, so. So, if you head back to your seats and find a blank piece of paper. And to do this, we're going to use a tool called P3T. 98, I beat you, so.
I was trying.
So, most of the best tools that I ever created came from working with students, and they're the ones that came up with this cool name, P3T, P to the third power, or the Paper Passing Purpose Tool, so. This was so powerful, getting kids to understand the purpose of, you know, why am I here? What am I doing? What's the aim of this class? Yes, you're in this English class, or language arts, or whatever it might be, but what's the aim of this? What are we trying to accomplish here? What are we doing? And I'll show you some examples in just a second. So, the first step is, what I want you to do is, other people on the board are going to read these. So you want to write legibly, and on this paper, I would just want you to draft out, what do you see as the aim or purpose of this board? Now, you can write a nice paragraph, you can write bullet points, you can even write key words if you want to, any way that you want to express, what do you see as the aim and purpose of the board? So, if I can get you guys now, when we get to the point of compiling this, maybe have two clip chart sheets, you can even put them on that whiteboard if you want to, and all this go around, get their feedback. You write one, and you write one, and they'll go really fast, and, does that make sense? Yep. So you don't have to write a whole dissertation, just a few lines is good. And now, what I'm going to have you do is pass it one to the right. Okay, so, when you get the one that was passed to you, what you're going to do is try to read it, of course, right? But as you go through that, you're going to come to key phrases, words, et cetera, that you say, okay, yep, I agree with that. And so when you get to there, you're just going to underline it, right? And once you feel like you've underlined everything in there that you feel is significant, then you're going to pass it to the right again, and you're all going to keep passing until you get your paper back. And if you get something, and it's already been underlined once, if you say, okay, I also agree with that, then underline it again, or you can put a check mark by it, or some symbol, some way that you acknowledge that, yeah, I agree with that.
So specific words, or like the whole thought, like?
Try to avoid underlining the whole thing, right? They get the award for innovation. No. It's a good question, though, I haven't ever had that before. Yeah, we're there. Yeah, don't keep passing. Okay, so, the next part of this, and once again, this is all about trying to get people to come to consensus on things very quickly. The next part of this is, I'm just going to go around, I'm going to have you read off, we'll start with Sadie, and say, tell me one thing that was underlined on yours. Student success. So, have Sarah one and Sarah two, so... Anna, just one thing that was underlined. It can be the most, if it was one or not, or... Okay. And then back to Sarah one, so...
Listen and engage.
Say again?
Listen and engage.
Student learning.
Student learning. Okay, and then we're back to Sarah one.
Improve.
Improve? Okay?
Unleash potential.
Ooh. Unleash potential. She's got it.
Vision and mission.
Represented.
Now, you have to have something that's different, something that's not been listed, so...
Help guide. Help guide. Our students' success, but...
Yes, this mask language is a whole different language.
Provide access. Surprise.
She's got it. Okay, something different.
Forward. Forward.
Advocate. Advocate, not advocate.
Advocate?
Improve, enhance, optimize the system.
Ooh.
Enhance, optimize the system.
Okay?
Feedback.
Feedback?
Set policy.
Celebrated.
Anything different?
With joy. With joy.
Joy.
Workforce.
Workforce, sorry.
Okay. Anything different?
Oversight.
Oversight? Anything different?
Resources, are they up there? I think they're up there.
Okay.
Is that the voice that represents? Voice? But I didn't get as many underlines for all the different "represents," so we're just going to stop with "voice representing." Evidently, only certain things.
Motivate.
Motivate?
Supports.
Say it again?
Supports.
Oh, supports.
Is positive impact.
Wow, you guys did a good job, so... What else? Anything else? Anything different?
Families involved.
Anything different?
Prepare students.
Fall forward. Fall...
Fall forward? Fall forward. Yeah.
Like Phil Ford, fall forward.
Anything different?
Hire the superintendent. Hire superintendent.
Have vote on... Vote, I guess.
Okay. Nothing? Anything different? Good.
I have all feel welcome.
Anything different? Anything different, Anna? Anybody?
Be educated.
Okay, so, in this point in the process, you start to see the consensus around what people think is the purpose, or the aim, or the vision of what you're trying to accomplish. In some instances, that's all we really have to do. We have to get it to that level, and these are the words that describe what our job is, what we want to do. The third level is, when we start to take these things and we start to turn that into a statement, or a paragraph, or something that we all agree on as, you know, what we're about. We'll do a bit of prioritization very quickly tomorrow, and try to narrow that list down a little bit, and maybe start to take that to the next level. But mostly, what I want you to think about is this diagram up here. So, Deming talked a lot about, an organization has to have an aim. It doesn't matter how big the organization is, whether that's a classroom, a board, the school district. And that's why you work on mission and vision and all those kinds of things. But if you don't have a clear aim, then you're in the dartboard improvement kind of a thing, where you're just throwing money at stuff, and methods, and processes, and things, and just hoping that it hits. Technology, all kinds of things. But if you've got a clearly defined aim in the bottom part, with a very clear purpose and vision, then everything starts to work better. All your methods, everything go to align to that aim of what we do. When I teach this to, I have taught this to little kids even, like first, second grade, and I'll go in and get a Nerf dartboard, and I put it on the wall, and I take my darts, and I just start throwing at them, and of course, I'm not very good at it, and they don't... Once in a while, they'll hit. And I'll get frustrated, but each time, I take a step back, and then I try it again, and I don't say anything, they just watch, you know? And then I'll take it, I just get more and more frustrated, and pretty soon, I'll just turn to them and say, gee, how can I get more of my darts in the board? And what do you think they say? Get closer, right? And that's the whole point of these kinds of exercises, get closer to what is your target. We're not all things to all people, but we are these things to these people. Right? That helps you really delineate and understand that, hey, there's all kinds of fads going on in education, all kinds of movements going on, all the time, always have been, you know? What's the next shiny object that somebody's chasing? That may be very interesting, that another district's doing this, or that, or there's a national fad going on, but you know, that's not going to get us close to our vision and our target of what we're doing. Does that make sense? And you'll find that people start to rest in that. They'll know that you're not chasing fads. Common thing in education is, teachers say, what's the flavor of the month? What are we into now? What are we going to do now? And pretty soon, they start to learn that every few months, there's a new flavor, a new thing comes along. And so, people start to learn not to get excited about stuff because you don't have constancy of purpose. Where the flip of that is, Leander has done a really good job in constantly making that constancy of purpose, you know? It's on the wall right there. You know, that's our purpose, and your guiding documents all lead you towards that, which is a very good thing. I just wanted to share one example that happened in one of my classrooms. I did the very same thing with this class. It was a second-year technology class I was teaching. Kids did this, passing, and then as a writing exercise, I had them take all those words and try to come up with words and phrases, and then they all combined those, and they came up with that. The purpose is to optimize student use of technology for now and in the future. If the skills are learned, they can be applied throughout life in a constant gain of knowledge and application, where work is quicker, easier, and more enjoyable with the world at our fingertips. Now, you could have put me in a closet for a month, and I couldn't have come up with something so cool as that. And then I asked them, I said, what do you think we should do with it now? And somebody said, we should sign it and commit to this. And so, we had this whole ceremony where we talked about, what does it mean when you sign something and you really make a commitment to something? And I said, don't sign this frivolously, right? If you're not ready to sign it, don't sign it today. It was really fascinating, I had numbers of kids that wouldn't sign it the first day, but then I'd look at it two or three days later, and they'd signed it. They just didn't want to do it in front of everybody when everybody was there, but they did want to be part of the organization. And then they decided that we should memorize this. So, we played a game, and we said, I locked the door the next day, and I said, you can't get in the classroom until you can say this, memorized. And we had great fun pulling, helping the last kid in the room, and coaching him to get in. But it was so powerful, that entire year, when I tried to do something that was not aligned to that purpose and aim, they'd call me on it all the time. How's that going to get us closer to that? And I think, not really, so... So, we're at our end time, so the very last thing I'd like to do today is, I put up a correlation chart, but I think yours is great. So, just make sure, before you go out today, give me a little bit of feedback on the correlation chart. Bit about tomorrow, so, you heard in the films, Deming talking about special and common cause variations, so I'm going to take you through role-playing tomorrow morning, and go a lot deeper into statistical variation, and how do you look at data, read data, make decisions about that. Then we're going to get into optimization of a system, and then after lunch, we're going to get back into moving forward with looking at the... I want to say, it's not a zoning problem, it's a bond issue problem. And we want to make sure that you guys have ample time to work on that, so that's kind of where we're headed. Thank you.
So, our eight o'clock meeting in the morning will start at nine. But breakfast will be here and ready by eight, so you're welcome to come ahead of time and just hang out a little bit, and then we'll start at nine.
Great.
And then we'll work, we'll have somewhat of a working lunch, that will be provided, and then we'll be ending at four, I believe. Thanks, David, really appreciate you. Thanks, Sarah and Sarah, and Laura Lynn. Can leave everything here, yes ma'am. Thanks for joining us.
All right, board members, if there's no other discussion, we've reached the end of our agenda this evening. Our board meeting is nine seventeen, or nine sixteen. Our board meeting is now concluded. Thank you. And we're adjourned.
Yeah, that'd be good. Great, thank you for your help. I'm good, thanks.